Welcome everyone, I think pretty much everyone who we're expecting this year. So we'll get going. The first item of the agenda is apologies.
Thank you Chair, apologies for absence received from councillors Todd, Scott Ferguson and Radcliffe. Thank you.
Next item, disclosures of interests. Anyone anything they need to disclose this evening? Everyone looking studiously downward, no. So we'll move on to chairperson's announcements. I was hoping councillor Tiff Cooper would be here, but perhaps councillor Looney could assist. I just wanted to be able to provide members with a bit of an update as to what we're doing with potential refugees coming to Winchester from the Ukraine, from Ukraine, sorry.
I'm not sure, I'm in a position to give much of an update. There's still a great deal of uncertainty about the role local authorities are going to play in this. For example, we still don't know whether the 10,000 in local authority support per family of refugees will be going to the county or to the city council as housing authority. So we're still working through some of those issues. We are recording offers of help from the public, but of course we now have the official route to go down there. So again, we're trying to make sure that we're not duplicating effort. I don't know if Mrs Robbins has anything to add to that?
Thank you, I can say that the housing and community teams met on Tuesday actually when we were discussing our approach and the support. And I have actually made arrangements to meet with councillor Tiff Cooper to talk about that and set out the next stages of that support.
Lovely, thank you both. I don't have any other announcements this evening. So we move on to minutes of the previous meeting. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to read through those, can they be agreed? Councillor Chris.
Sorry Chair, it's not an agreement, it's a comment and acknowledgement of the minutes from the last meeting around the SIL contributions and the paper that Corinne kindly circulated.
So you just wanted to record that what had been requested is now being provided?
Yeah, we request that and really acknowledge that the great work has been done and how insightful and informative it is. And I trust all councillors read it. I think personally, I think it's, if I may Chair, I think it's very informative particularly for newer councillors perhaps, particularly for newer councillors in the more southern wards. When you look at where the SIL contribution is coming from. They come from the North West of Winchester, so 80% of SIL contributions across the town come from the North West. And if I extrapolate the numbers up, given only 15% across the town, I reckon that the city contributes 7.3 million district SIL funding, Chair, which is over 50% of the whole district. So Pauls and St Barnabas contribute easily 50% of the whole district SIL. Just gives you a sense of the house building that's been going on in those two wards. So when I think new councillors look at SIL funding and look at new homes bonuses, I think, gosh, this is exciting. We're going to spend it on our parks and our pavilions and on the heritage assets. Just an acknowledgement of where that funding comes from and the impact it has on the residents of North West Winchester would be very much appreciated. You know, it's not, we're not bitter in the North West, Chair. You know, if anything, we're bitter. Because it now takes us an hour to walk from Hairstock to the new leisure centre. And by the time we walk back, that's 10,000 steps easily, so we don't need to use the leisure centre actually. So we're fine. But you know, seriously, we do consider ourselves a part of the body of Winchester and contributing to the whole. And I'd just say acknowledgement, you know, we might be the fleet that step in the mud and have the house building come from that, but we're the engine of the city. And you know, the people in North West, they don't say much, they're quite hardworking, they rely on me to do that. That's really why I'm here to do that, speaking for them. And I very much appreciate the opportunity as the residents and that they expect me to say these kind of things. So that's why I've been banging on about house building in the North West, particularly in St Barnabas, because it has gone, in my mind, unplanned, unmanaged. And if you look at the houses, which are quite obvious on Shrewsbarton, the million pound homes that have spread out along there and the houses in Wantie Road, half of the value, half of the value has been surreptitiously spread across the gardens and green spaces in St Barnabas. And you look at it now, very little green space. So that's what I've been banging on about, Chair, and it's very reassuring to see that the numbers from the SIL receipts do support that. And as I say, it should go into the places that need investment in terms of facilities for all of Winchester, parks, the heritage assets, fully support that and have always supported that. But just, I'm greatly validated by the numbers and want to thank Corinne for the work that she's produced. So thank you Chair.
Thank you, I think we can all agree with that. So with that in mind, do other minutes agree?
Agree.
Thank you. So we move on to public participation. I think we only have one member of the public here today, Mr Tate, very welcome, thank you for coming. I think you probably know the drill better than the rest of us, so you've got three minutes, but you're always with the next, so thank you.
Thank you Chair for the opportunity to address the town forum. You may recall that I addressed the forum back on the 16th of September last year and raised a number of issues. And I've been prompted to follow that up because of problems relating to Hyde Gate. The issues I talked about last September ranged from rubbish left on streets to pigeons, speeding traffic and repairs to the High Street. My comments did seem to prompt some action as the bags of rubbish piled up outside Coipery House were removed the following day and Hammond's Passage was sorted out within a week, which I'm very grateful. It was explained to me that the Buttercross is a scheduled ancient monument, didn't know that. Then agreement is required from English Heritage for any work undertaken to this structure. I believe that councillor Tiff Cooper leads a heritage group and he's clearly well aware of Edward Fenell's worries about Hyde Gate, also a scheduled ancient monument. But perhaps the underlying problem here isn't to do, is to do much more with the number of pigeons rather than how we protect individual buildings from them. With the refurbishment, the brilliant refurbishment work currently being undertaken to 43 the High Street, just look, virtually every surface is now covered with anti-pigeon problems. And if they're not, then the place would be blighted by pigeons and all their associated accoutrements. Like with 43 the High Street, virtually every flat surface in the square has pigeon devices to deter them, yet it hasn't resolved the issue. Sadly, when I walked through the square earlier today, a lady was feeding the pigeons with bread, which may explain the problem. Feeding pigeons is an issue right across the city centre. It is littering and it could be fined if there was a will to do so. Pigeons are a real problem to say right across the city centre. When I walked up, Hammond's Passage is disgusting. It is just one continuous trail of pigeon excrement, it's repulsive. So okay, you've got rid of the bins, we've now just got the pigeons' nest. Just sort of rounding up, I mentioned the issue of the bins. When Koprashry came to Winchester, I looked it up, back on the 4th of June 2013, I put in an objection, a concern that they shouldn't leave their bins on the High Street and they said they wouldn't leave them on the High Street. In the last couple of months, they are now doing so. So if I can just flag that up, that is an enforcement issue. The temporary, it's unfortunate councillor Todd's not here, the tarmac outside Tesco's, that was dug up in July, I think it was the 24th of July last year. I flagged it up to the Chronicle, all the broken paving stones were removed and tarmac was laid. Councillor Todd said to me that matters were in hand to sort that out. It hasn't been done and I do wonder, do other people spot these issues as I spot them? I wonder. I won't touch upon the 20 mile an hour speed limit, I'm a pedestrian, not a driver. And if people could respect the 30 mile an hour speed limit, the city centre would work fine. So the aspiration for 20 mile an hour speed limit, why waste your effort if you don't enforce 30 mile an hour speed limits? Thank you for the opportunity to address you and I hope some of those issues will be picked up as promptly as they were back in September. Thank you very much Chair.
Thank you, that's a wide range of topics to respond to. I have to say, yes, you're not the only one who notices things like this, I think most of us do. We did have a competition amongst the group to who has the most boring holiday photos of bins or public toilets or paving stones. So we do all recognise those issues as well. Councillor Tiff Cooper, if I come to you first on the Hyde Gate and Buttercross, that'd be lovely.
Thank you very much Chair, yes, and Mr Tate, I totally share all those feelings that you just expressed. Specifically, I've got a longer update on Hyde Gate later on, but specifically on the pigeons, which are an absolute nightmare. So the pigeon proofing has been installed now, the solution. However, there's been some difficulties, they're very, very stubborn pigeons and I'm told that essentially this is a, some can be a bit of a trial and error process to getting sort of proofing solutions right. The chamber is now protected and pigeons kept out there. The main gate archway is a problem. The issue is, is that along the two ledges of stone, the pigeons were still settling. And the difficulty is, is that the electric track, the terra-track running along the wooden beams, that was permissible work by historical, but drilling into the stones wasn't permitted, so we couldn't do that. So there was an attempt to fix it last week, end of the week before last, to pull out the grating that's been installed on those entrances, try and stop pigeons sitting there. But they've come back and they are sitting quite spectacularly in a sort of one leg up, one leg down fashion, they are very stubborn. But there is going to be, again, an attempt to remedy that because nobody wants to remove those pigeons out of that gate more than I do. I go for it almost every day.
Maybe me.
And councillor Becker actually, I mean councillor Becker's been working extraordinarily hard over the last two and a half years to turn around Hyde Gate and we'll get to that a bit later. But yes, that's the answer, the attempt to fix that will be coming in the next week or so. In terms of the Buttercross, there is going to be an update later on, but essentially we've got a budget now, I heard it's actually a budget lined up and there's going to be some work on the Buttercross, which I'll talk about a bit more later. In terms of litter, I'm completely with you and hopefully we'll probably bump into you at some point during Britain's great big spring clean. We've got a litter pick coming up in Winnell on the 10th of April and we're going to do one on Hyde, I think, as well. So we need to get that started again. And also, yeah, I think a dry sand is graffiti at the moment, which is a big, big issue. We are, there's work being done to address that as well, investment in sort of more effective kit to clean it has been done. These issues are really, I think, one of these bugbears that we all share. And it's really good of you to come and basically keep them on the agenda because we all think they should be.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming along tonight. Now, also with us tonight is Stuart Mills from WINEC, who is going to do a presentation on the Winchester area super homes.
Hi.
Thank you for having me.
Hi, good evening, thank you for inviting me along to our councillors, appreciate that. So my name is Stuart, Stuart Mills, I'm employed by Winchester Action on the Climate Crisis, local charity, being taking action on the climate since 2008, I'm assuming you all know of us. I'm here tonight to talk about our Home Energy retrofit project, Winchester area super homes. And just very quickly explain what's meant by retrofit. Retrofit is about adapting existing buildings, so not new build, but adapting existing buildings to reduce and change their energy use. So reducing their carbon emissions or their carbon footprint. And there's basically two ways in which that can be done. And the first is to reduce the amount of heat that a property loses by insulating it better. The walls, the ceilings, the floors, the windows. And then also by changing the type of energy that's used. For example, by replacing gas boilers with technology that uses electricity, such as heat pumps, that electricity can be generated from net zero or low carbon sources. And then also by generating electricity ourselves using solar panels. But those are the sort of three principal ways in which a property can be retrofitted to reduce emissions. And you might have seen that the recently released IPCC, so that's the UN's International Panel on Climate Change, six assessment reports stated that among many other consequences, today's children will experience an estimated fourfold increase in extreme weather events if we have 1.5 degrees centigrade global warming by 20100. And we're pretty close to that already. And I obviously don't need to tell you that in 2019, you, Winchester City Council, declared a climate emergency with a target of a net zero carbon Winchester by 2030. And you'll also be aware that the resulting Carbon Utility Action Plan, which is up there, section up there, which sets out domestic energy use, so that's energy in the home, created in the home, is the second largest contributor to carbon emissions in the district. That's about 20% of all direct carbon emissions are caused by how we heat our homes and our hot water. So if we're going to have any chance of reaching net zero locally and nationally, something has to be done about this. It's really good to see that the city council is looking at how it can decarbonise its own properties over the next 10 years. And but, these 5,000 properties, your own properties, are less than 10% of the 55,000 or so properties across the whole district. And when it comes to the other 50,000 properties, the city council's funding is quite limited. Phase three of the Local Authority Delivery Fund, which you may be aware of, which Winchester has part of that funding, will provide up to £10,000 retrofit funding for 1,600 low income households across a consortium of 22 local authorities, of which Winchester is one. So there's likely to be less than about 100 properties in the district that will benefit from that. So that's 100 out of the 50,000. And this is not crystal review, please don't think that is, you know, this is the reality, it's the funding, the national funding of reality around retrofit. The Local Energy Advice Partnership, or LEAP, can also help. But the measures are quite limited and they're focused more on fairly simple energy saving measures than actual retrofit. If the district is going to reach net zero by 2030, there's a lot of work that's going to have to take place to show those other 50,000 properties what they can and need to do to reduce their carbon footprint. And that's where our project comes in, that's what we're trying to help with. It's a non-profit project, Winchester area super homes. We partnered with a national charity called the National Energy Foundation. They've got a huge amount of experience and technical knowledge and we want to set up 25 super home show homes and support another 125 homes to be assessed and starting retrofits. It's a two-year project. It's funded by the Energy Redress Scheme, which uses penalties that have been paid by energy companies over the years in order to promote energy sustainability. And we basically want to use this project to kickstart home energy retrofit by showing people exactly how it can be done. We think that what's missing at the moment, apart obviously from more generous government funding, is advice. Detailed, tailored, independent advice on exactly what can be done to a property to reduce its carbon emissions. So we're helping homeowners get this advice by connecting them with trained professionals called retrofit coordinators. And a retrofit coordinator is trained to carry out, excuse me, a retrofit coordinator is trained to carry out a home energy survey and produce an individual report called a whole house retrofit plan. And this retrofit plan details all the measures that could be taken to reduce a home's carbon footprint, that particular home's carbon footprint, with information on the likely costs, the savings and the reductions in carbon emissions. And this allows a homeowner to make a well-informed decision on how to proceed instead of just having to rely on advice from commercial installers. As part of the project, we're also going to provide advice on available grants and we're going to give people lists of local accredited installers. But we want to reach a lot more than just the 150 homeowners who have retro plans. We want to show other people what can be done by creating and sharing case studies and videos of show homes across the district. And we also have project funding to pay for the cost of training five local people as retrofit coordinators, the national shortage of that role, plus pay for the accreditation cost of 10 local installers, which is built up the supply chain more. The retrofit coordinator's standard fee for one of these whole house retrofit plans is £500. And this is obviously a significant investment, but if people are seriously considering adapting their property, we believe it represents value for money and it's certainly less than they pay if they approached an energy consultant directly. But we do have project subsidies for people on low and middle incomes. We define low income for the project purposes as being in receipt of universal credit or pension credit. And people in that situation, homeowners in that situation, get a 90% discount. We've got other funding that can cover the 10%, so it's effectively free for somebody in that position. And we would then try and link them in with the local authority delivery funding that you have. And we can provide project funding up to £3,000 towards the cost of solar panels if they become a show home. Middle income, we define by having a property that is a council tax band A, B or C. Obviously not a measure of income, but we didn't want to get to looking at people's pay packets and savings and that seemed like a simpler way of doing it. And people with those properties get a 50% discount plus £1,700 show home subsidy for solar PP. So we're trying to make it easier for people on low, middle incomes to access this advice and access this project. We've got a target of signing up to set 150 properties. We've got about 70 so far, we're about halfway through the project, so it's going well, but it's, you know, it's a challenge. The city council has been supportive and we appreciate that. We've been included in some of your communications and a recent insert in the city council email resulted in several inquiries, which is really helpful. But if we're going to be successful in reaching as many people as possible across the district, we need your help in promoting this project further. And any support that you can give us as councillors in passing on information about a project to residents would be really, really appreciated. And I'd like to thank councillor Weir for being really supportive. She organised this meeting in Week last week and she's pumped up the project, it would be really helpful and it's why I'm here tonight as well. And councillor Williams, it's very helpful, you've promoted the city council comms team for us, I'm meeting her next week. But anything else that you can do to help spread the word, either centrally through city council comms or through your own communications, would be incredibly helpful. You can contact me on that email address, wash@winac.uk or via WINEC's website and I can give you articles to put in newsletters and all sorts of information. Thank you very much, that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you, that was fantastic. I'm sure we've got lots of questions. Councillor Thompson.
It's not really a question, but more of a comment. And I mean, I've known that you were doing this and I think it's absolutely excellent because you're quite right. How are we going to tap into those 50,000 houses that we've got across the district and make them energy efficient? And I think that is really a challenge. So you're saying you've got 70 sort of homeowners signed up so far and you want to go for 150. When you reach 150, will you be able to sort of expand again and roll it out, you know, even further?
At the moment, it's a two-year project, the funding is for two years. What we're aiming to do is to set up some kind of legacy service at the end of that two-year project. So there's some funding built within the project to design some kind of business plan to make that happen. So what we'd love to see is an ongoing service in this area so that people can continue to access that.
Sorry, there was another question about show homes, that sounds really, really nice. Have you got any of them up and running at the moment?
Yes, we have, so well, we're in the process at the moment of assessing, there's a few, we've got about five properties that have been through retrofit and we're developing case studies, we're taking some videos, so that's all in the process at the moment. Because yeah, for us, that's the key, god, genuinely, it's about showing other people what can be done. If it was just 150 properties, it would be a drop in the ocean, yeah.
I really agree, I think a lot of this is, you know, people will be on this steep learning curve in terms of particularly changing boilers, for instance. And I think it's really helpful if you've got a home that has been retrofitted in that way so you can actually demonstrate how it works and, you know, homeowners can talk to those, the people in the house too, and find out how they actually use it and how they find it, I think that's excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, just to add to that, one of the things that we're doing is working with parish councils around the district to set up open home events, with homeowners already done it as well.
Thank you, councillor Carsk.
Thank you Chair, thank you Stuart, great presentation, very clear, very powerful, very much appreciated. Can you talk a little bit about who's actually going to do the work? Who you might refer, recommend? And I'm kind of wondering if there's any overlap that we might have with what we're doing on our own homes as well? Just so we can actually get stuff done. So it also probably plays into how we might build that capability more locally, support that locally as well.
Yeah, absolutely, and I mean, there is, there are obviously issues in the construction industry at the moment around capacity and being very busy. What we deliberately, we're deliberately not recommending individual installers because we feel that the risks for us and all the organisation are too high in doing that because we can't effectively vet installers. So what we're doing is providing people with lists of all the local accredited installers. There's two accreditation schemes, ACS and Trustmark, which gives some degree of safety around, course of crisis has been in place and that kind of thing. And then we're giving people review site links to consumer sites for those particular installers so they can make some kind of assessment. We're offering project management support from the retrofit coordinators. That is, there is an additional fee for that and that's not part of the main trust project. But that doesn't really answer your question, I know. But I think what we'd like to see is an ongoing service, is a service that has installers as part of that service. There are other models around the country, particularly there's a great one in Manchester called Carbon Co-op. Walworths in Scotland is another one, there is a certain scale that you have to reach to be able to have an installer as part of the service. And I think that's what ultimately we'd like to see, so it's a, you know, a service that can provide the work as well. At the moment, we're just referring to local installers.
Thank you, councillor Liswood.
Thank you Chair, just a question on linking up with the council more effectively. So you mentioned a bit to the councillor, to the councillor, is there any regular representation from the council on your committee? If not, would you benefit from that sort of link?
There's not representation of that kind, I think that would be great to have that sort of link. I mean, officers have been very supportive, you know, we're obviously in regular contact with your sustainability officer and people like Kevin Reed, the private sector housing lead, Chris Sky, all I've been in touch with. You know, there are good channels of support, I know WINEC obviously speaks to elected members, but no, a link like that would be great, yeah.
Any further questions? Councillor Tiff Cooper, sorry, where's my voice in? Councillor Tiff Cooper.
Do you have any sort of pre-purposed, pre-packed social media communications that I could use for you?
Yeah, absolutely, no problem at all, if you just drop me an email and I'll send some stuff to you, yeah.
Thank you, I had a few questions. The houses that you already have, do they fall within the low income or middle income bracket? Tend to fall in one rather than the other?
Yeah, there is a fairly broad range. We have struggled to recruit low income homeowners, I think that's not surprising really because people, for a start, people on universal credit often don't own their homes, usually don't own their homes. If they do, they've probably got other priorities than getting their carbon emissions down. But what we've got out of those 70, three are on universal credit. I think about another 13 are in the middle income range and the others are in what we're terribly able to pay range. And I think, I mean, WINEC's never been, you know, we're obviously very concerned about fuel poverty and we're concerned about people on low incomes being able to take these sort of measures. But we also recognise that people on higher incomes are actually producing more emissions and have the means in which to reduce them. So we're not worried about targeting those people as well, yeah.
My next question about fuel poverty, because obviously at the moment we're seeing energy prices rise through the roof. We're seeing oil and diesel costs go through the roof and so I think it's fortunate, it couldn't come at a better time for a lot of people, so thank you. Also, just to say, Anna Wise is here, she is the council's new sustainability officer. I don't think lots of us had the opportunity to meet her before, but I'm sure Stuart and me at all will be meeting shortly and having lots of conversations. So I just wanted to thank you Anna for coming along tonight as well. will be meeting shortly and having lots of conversations. So I just wanted to thank, thank you, Anna, for coming along tonight as well. Thank you.
I didn't have a question, but I would like to, to make a comment. Before we get too despondent, about 50,000 houses, I think we need to recognise that quite a few of those have actually either been retrofitted or built to very high standards in the first place. So it is around about rapidly rolling this stuff out. And I have actually acted as a Winac show home myself. We retrofitted our house. And last year, I mean, you can't take this year's energy bills coming as an example. Last year, our energy bills were two thirds of what they'd been 10 years before. And that's not even including the feed-in tariff and renewable heat incentive that we've received on top. So it's been one of the best investments we've ever made in terms of our house. And I would really encourage people to, to have a good look. And it is helpful if you get an expert in to assist you with that. But as has been said, there's almost never been a better time to do this because the financial returns of doing it, even with increasing cost of materials and so on, you know, are incredibly significant. And not only that, but you end up living in a much more comfortable house. So, so I would recommend it to everyone.
Thank you very much, a glowing endorsement. Thank you for coming along tonight, Stuart. I'm really, really appreciative. And I think we will, I mean, I've already shared the information with some people and will share further. So thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the KTV Pavilion funding. I think we've got Mr Robbins here to talk about that. But it's going to be introduced by councillor Loney.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I do have my member of cabinet hat on at this point rather than as a member of this, of the town forum. So I'm very pleased to be able to bring this forward this evening. KGV Pavilion will be the district home for women and girls' football. Its sporting significance is shown by the support given by Football Foundation to the council in order that we obtain a significant grant from them. The pavilion will also provide facilities for cricket, including for girls and disability cricket. While the club room will be available for community and social events, it is being built in an area which is covered by a fields and trust designation, which does require it to be a sports rather than a community facility. And the design does reflect this. It is designed to support sporting activity rather than the community. But that doesn't mean it's not available for dual use. Because of its significance for the district, cabinet have agreed to make available capital receipts and make a bid for district seal funding in order to close the significant funding gap that's arisen with recent increases in building costs. The council is also putting together an advisory group to work with us on managing the pavilion and its use, which will consist primarily of sports organisations, but will also have councillor and community representation. And the town forum will be bearing responsibility for the new pavilion and that's covered in page 33 of the document pack. There are additional running and maintenance costs compared to the previous two pavilions, but the facilities offered are incomparably better. And it is anticipated that the net position will improve once activity in the building gets going. We have already, for example, had interest in using the pavilion for football training courses. And I also need to add that we are talking about building a highly sustainable exemplar building here in line with our climate emergency commitments, which is very appropriate, obviously, this evening. And also that although this paper only covers the KGV pavilion, work on the North Walls Pavilion continues. Sources of additional funding for that are being explored. And we do absolutely remain committed to replacement of the existing building in North Walls as well as moving forward with building the new pavilion at KGV. So I'm happy to, to take any questions, Chair.
Thank you. Just received a message saying my dog is eating a quarter of a hot cross bun, but she's very big. It will be fine. Thank you very much, councillor Loney. Do we have questions on this paper for either councillor Loney or Mrs Robbins? Noting that we, while cabinet have already taken decisions on this paper, we also have some decisions to take. We are asked to support proposals for the new pavilion, noting the additional £21,000 additional net costs that will be met from the town accounts. And we're also asked to approve an allocation of £250,000 from the town forum seal budget to support this project. So keeping that in mind, do we have questions this evening? Councillor Karusk, as always.
I'm delighted, Chair. So page 33, I see the pavilion offers potential for a more ambitious business plan and increased revenue generation, which should be pursued through your government scheme. I hope you say something, councillor, about the football training, I think you would be saying. Do we have any more on that? Very keen to make as much from this as we can and to explore all the opportunities. So wondering who the government, government scheme is? And do we imagine right now, I see pavilion hire coming in at 3,000, would we imagine that's? So 3,000. And if we do get money, does that come to the town forum?
The answer is yes, it will come to the town forum. As I mentioned, we have already had an approach from a professional football organisation about running kind of holiday courses from that side, which is good news because that's very consistent income. I don't know if Mrs Robbins wants to say something about the, the community involvement and the management group?
Yeah, thank you, councillor. Very happy to. And the figures here are based on modelling and the pricing and they're probably quite conservative. And the purpose of the governance, which will include the council and as mentioned, local sporting groups and the main users of the pitches and the pavilion. And they will be considering the, the use of it, how it's best promoted. And then we will work with them also on the, the pricing, but that's obviously something that's still to be determined by the council. But I think in the coming year, we have the opportunity, whilst it's under construction, to work with those groups to take those issues and really examine them in more detail.
Councillor Tippett-Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I've got some very positive comments to say about this debate, but I won't do a councillor piece and I'll say the debate. On the sort of questions, just looking at the users that have seen this, there's some really obviously good users there. It looks like the intense, you know, the most intense use will be over the weekends. And I'm just slightly worried about whether there's a good amount of use from Monday to Friday for what is going to be a really substantial facility.
Thank you. I think that's one of the reasons for having user groups set up so that we can actually work with them and expand the provision that could take place in those periods where it's perhaps not so heavily used by the existing clubs that we have. So I think it is about seeking those opportunities and getting different activities in. But we could go much about working with those organisations to make that provision available.
Yeah. And I will say there is a shortage of junior football training capacity, which goes on not just at the weekend, but during evenings. And I certainly anticipate that it will be a much more desirable destination for a lot of those clubs once we have decent facilities attached to the pitches.
But just to add to that, I totally agree. And I think there's probably other clubs in the area as well that, you know, even on the sort of spreadsheet at the moment, considering that, thinking Winchester Castle, for example, they're looking at doing some more youth teamwork and, you know, they'd love the opportunity to get involved during midweek training and things like that.
Thanks. I had a very general question. Does this funding affect the funding available for the pavilion project or the pavilion at North Walls at all?
Mr Botham may want to comment on that, but they are independent projects.
Chair, yes, to confirm, we don't see this as a competition. It's, it's a funding that the town forum have already approved for the North Walls Pavilion remains available and that project continues to progress.
So we move to debate. Is there any debate on this item? Councillor Weir?
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to say how pleased, Diane, that this project is moving forward. I think I'd like to thank all the officers involved in pulling it together. It's been quite, well, a labour of love on many parts. And it's, it's really vitally important that we can get this off the ground. It will play a really important part in completing the Winchester Sports and Leisure Park programme. And I think it'd be a real asset to that part of the town. So I'm glad that we've got to this position. I think we all have to understand that bill costs are escalating very fast. And the quicker we get off the ground, the better. So, completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Tippett-Cooper?
Yes, just to sort of add that comment I was going to earlier, that this, this is really fantastic. And I'm particularly, I mean, I'm a huge, huge football advocate, fan generally. So it's wonderful to see the focus on this facility, particularly for such an inclusive sport and particularly for women and girls' football, which really does need funding facilities going forward. It's a really fast growth sport. Brilliant for those facilities like this that are going to be built. And the point made by councillor Weir is, you know, building costs are going up. And I think we have to be sort of, as we've been kind of pragmatic with this, this project, I think we also have to be pragmatic with the pavilion project too, looking at the sort of benefits which they're going to bring to the area as well in terms of sporting delivery and community delivery, which, you know, they're promising both in the same way that this site promises both. But really well done on this project generally. And it's really exciting to see that this is going to be a, hopefully make Winchester a capital of women and girls' football.
Lovely. Thank you. Any further debate? No. So we go to the recommendations that we support the proposals for the new pavilion, noting the annual net costs and that we approve an allocation of £250,000 from the town forum seal budget to support the project. Is that agreed? Agreed. That is wonderful. Thank you all for the work that you've done on this. I know it's been a real labour of love to get this off the ground and to, well, to get the spade in the ground to this stage. So thank you all for your work on this. And I think also just to reassure the people, the supporters of the pavilion project, that just because this is going ahead does not mean that that project is stalled. We're very committed to both projects. It's just this one happened to be ready sooner than the other. But we look forward to getting to this stage with that in due course. So thank you, everyone. The next item is, still, Mrs Robbins, thank you for being here, and Mr Finch as well. The Winchester Town Vision progress update. Now, just to confirm, I have not been promoted to cabinet. I think it's just the template to say that I am the person leading on this paper. In fact, Mrs Robbins, did you want to provide the general introduction to it, please?
Thank you, Chair. I was happy to do so. You'll be aware that it's been a year, just about, or just over a year since the town forum adopted the Winchester Town Vision. And in September, your call, I came and gave an update about how we might be able to implement to take the ethos and the values and the principles of that vision forward. So this report provides an update on the work that has been carried out across the council and against the vision themes and that have involved residents, community groups and local organisations since April 21. And it also has information about the funding resources and drawing attention to, for example, additional staffing as the neighbourhood services engagement officers that will be employed. And I wanted to just highlight some of those key projects that have been undertaken across the council under those different themes. So I'll just run through some of them. So from a community perspective, we have undertaken work supporting Party in the Park. You'll be familiar with that event. And this time it's going to be at Jubilee Picnic in the Park and our community teams have been supporting that. We've been working through estates with our community centres. And we have been looking at the playing out initiative as well, which enables people to go back into their high streets and play on the streets, which provide funding to support that as well. Our natural environment team have been undertaking consultations with schools. And over 200 people have participated in the North Walls Play Area refurbishment consultation. Sustainability, we have been working with Winac and looking at local area and community energy hubs and how local areas and communities can respond to the climate situation and emergency. And we've hosted webinars and we've had action planning workshops attended by about 64 people. And the generation team's been involved as well. We had an event in Busket Lane, Busket Yard, which had young people coming along and giving sort of urban art, introduction to urban art. And the housing as well with its next generation Winchester initiative as well, which really worked with young people, understanding their barriers, issues and needs around accessing housing in the district. We've worked through the movement theme on a lot of health initiatives and active travel, such as the wellbeing walks, working with local volunteers, the Walk to School Programme. I'm sort of running through them. We've got them in front of you. But we've also been working on more strategic policy activities as well around the movement strategy and the cycling and walking infrastructure plan. So there's a mix there of, you know, real practical projects at the community level, but also involvement in consultation at more a policy and design and strategic level as well. And that leads on to the sort of spatial context, which I know was a big element of the Winchester vision and how this might be taken forward in the local plan. And there has been, that was included within the consultation on the strategic issues and priorities consultation. There's been a design workshop facilitated by Design South East. Forty or so people attended that. And I believe that was reported to the local plan advisory group just the other week, I think. So there's more information available on that as well. So that's some of the projects. Just run through them. You have the paper there. But I also wanted to highlight that some of the other leaders we have, which is around finance, and you have their information around the grants that we have been giving out. And I know that there has been another round of grants awarded just recently. I think I had the information last week about that. So actually, the numbers here will have increased quite significantly. I understand there was a really good number that came through on that last round. So that's to be added to. Neighborhood seal, we mentioned about some of the projects that are being funded there. And also, I wanted to draw attention to the fact that the vision was used to support an application for community renewal fund. Unfortunately, not successful, but we did get quite a way through the vetting rounds. And that was really based on the information and the work that had come out of the town vision. Having that available to support that investment application was really important. And I think those sorts of opportunities should be pursued further and investigated more. As you'll be aware, one of the activities really suggested that we mainstream this vision was to have some training sessions, members and officers. That hasn't progressed, but I have met with Urban Feria and they are revising their proposal and working on the design about how they can work with us on that. And I'm expecting that back very shortly and that will commence very soon. So I have had those meetings with them. And I think for conclusion, one of the things recommended here is that an informal group perhaps be set up to oversee the continuing information implementation and rollout of the vision and its aims and objectives. And I think, yeah, thank you. I think that is going to conclude my opening remarks. Thank you.
Lovely. Thank you very much. Mr Finch, did you have anything to add on the spatial element?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think it's probably just worth saying, actually, we learnt quite a lot that we've taken from the vision in terms of when we did the local plan consultation.
that we've taken from the vision in terms of when we did the local plan consultations a year ago now, to see that. Long ago, it was strategic issues and priorities. And I think that was really good. And as you know, we had a very, very good response. In fact, a huge response, over 2,200 responses. And I think to some degree, we learnt some lessons from the vision work that was undertaken, obviously. And we're going to take that forward as well. So some of the principles that were set out in the vision, in the three handbooks, etc., will, where they've got a spatial element, will be incorporated within the local plan. And also, we had a really good, I think, as Robyn said, you know, we had a really good session before Christmas, again, October, November time, and we did a particular session on design and design in the context generally in the local plan and also specifically in Winchester. And looking at things like areas of opportunity and how we might deal with that. And we're also looking to move that further forward. And we've been discussing, as you know yourself, that was the Crask and City Winchester Trust, to see how we can also follow some of those principles and engage with it more widely. But also, I think there is a real consensus that we are going to look to do things like design within the new local plan in a different way, both in terms of Winchester Town and more generally. So, yeah, there's a lot that's going there. There's practical things that we can use to move into the local plan and take that forward as well. And also, you've had some discussion already around community infrastructure, living in SIL. And again, I think as the report says, there's opportunity to explore that, about empowering those communities to make change themselves. So hopefully that's useful. Thank you, Chair.
Lovely. Thank you very much. Do we have questions? Councillor Crask.
Thanks, Chair. Just so many struggles this, I think I'm quite emotional about this. Apologies. In terms of the question, Simon, you talked about the vision, how that fed into the planning work and how that fits specifically into workshops with the residents and the community, particularly around the main areas of opportunity. I won't mention where it is that some people said we should replace the council offices too, as you can see on the picture there. But one of the things which I don't see in here, which I do get excited about, was the workshop you did with developers and architects, looking at the policies. I thought that was incredibly powerful and is disappointing. I would like to have seen that in here, because I think that's really one of the things which demonstrates to people, going back to what I started talking about at the beginning, sort of planning. That's how we can plan housebuildings better, in my mind, in terms of infield. It's giving people policies that they can refer to and either build against or create plans for or defend against. And I think if we look at some of the outputs from that, some of the policies that people were talking about, it was about renewals and sustainability, in terms of how you plan for cars within new developments, and policies for health and wellbeing. So those kind of plans, I think, are critical, or policies, I should say. Those kind of policies are critical to manage development, particularly in infill sites. Sort of to get those right developments with the right policies that deliver the outcome. So it's more a comment as much a question, why that wasn't in the paper? Because I think that's a very powerful demonstration of what people are saying. And as I look through the vision material, this is why I get quite emotional, actually, I can't stop thinking. But this is what people are asking for. People are saying, we want climate change to be managed, we want sustainability. How can we do this? And I think the missing trick, if we don't demonstrate the development policies to deliver on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Crask. I think maybe we sold ourselves a bit short in the sense, I think the report was quite detailed anyway, quite long, but you're absolutely right. I mean, the reason we cited the one we did was because that was specific for Winchester. But as you know, we did a different session for the market towns and rural areas. And we did the first session, which you might rightly say, which was a general discussion with an invited audience of developers, architects, local architects, etc., which was really, really helpful in terms of how we take the theme of design forward. And what I learned from that actually is that one of the most interesting really sort of points that jumped off the page, that we captured in the reports that we republished now, we took through the local plan advisory group last week, was achieving good design as a process. And that sounds really obvious, but the government's re-emphasized that through the national design codes. And these are things that we can build on in a local context. And that was really striking, actually. I think that design process is something we need to enshrine in the plan. And we want to do design in a different way. And it's some of the things that we discussed sort of outside this meeting, in terms of how we take that. We've got a particular officer, Toby Ayling, that's relatively new to Winchester. And what he's been tasked to do is help us take that forward and build on the experience he's got elsewhere as well. So there's a lot going on, both nationally, as shifted, locally as well. So I think it's quite exciting, actually. I think we can do things better and differently and building on a lot of the stuff that came and started through, the things that came through the vision, that process. But, yeah, I mean, that first workshop that we did was really engaging and we got a lot of... I mean, when you do these things, you're always wary a little bit about how much you're going to get out of these things. You know, because, and it was hosted by Design South East and they were fantastic, actually, engendering a really good, positive response. But if anything, it exceeded my expectations. And if anybody hasn't had the time, and I appreciate you're going to be quite busy, I think, having a few weeks, I suspect. But if you do get a spare half hour, do have a look if you weren't there last week at the local planning advisory group, because those reports are there and published, and they are part of the evidence base of the local plan as we look to take the town and design topic forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Murray.
Thank you. One of the key problems we've encountered with a lot of community projects is a lack of project management, because it's all very well empowering communities, but if they lack the ability to project manage their own projects, then they kind of grind to a halt. Have we got any thoughts about how we can support them in that aspect, rather than just giving them a bit of money?
Mrs. Robbins, I guess this one's for you?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor. I think empowerment doesn't mean just handing it over and leaving people. So I think there is a support there, is perhaps giving that support in a different way. And rather than the sort of an instructive way, it's more of an encouragement and learning and development way. So I think that's part of the change of approach that we might need to work with our communities. But, yes, certainly we wouldn't, you know, not give support to those organisations that might be wanting to take a project forward. It's just that we provide that slightly differently. And our community development team have experience with working with those groups. And so also our grant manager often has drop-ins and provides support. So it's sort of finding the mechanisms to develop that skill, capacity in the community. Because once they have that, then that will encourage, you know, greater involvement in the future.
Sorry, councillor Green, I think I missed you off. Did you have a question?
No, I was just going to say something in the way.
Councillor Crask.
Thanks, Chair. Probably a bit of a comment about questions.
I do have a question, so.
You go first.
I, going through the paper, it did strike me that we didn't have any crowdfunding applications for the town forum this year. I just wondered if you had thoughts on why that was and what we can do to remove, if there are barriers to town groups applying for those funds, what we can do to remove those barriers to make it easier for those funds to be allocated to the community, because I'd much rather they have it than we do.
Thank you. It's not an issue that solely the town forum. The whole crowdfunding platform hasn't had great take-up. We put on sessions, we put on training, we've done a lot of outreach. And I don't know whether it's still because some organisations and still some people feel that it's, you know, they just haven't got the capacity at this time. Maybe there's still some of that post-Covid issue that they're dealing with. But we are looking at this. We do realise that that is a concern. But I think it is open to maybe doing something a bit differently with it. If it's not working, then we would need to investigate that further, and we would do that.
Just to follow on, was that, is that the kind of project that you would visit the vision informal group could look at? Or would that be something for the grants group? Or is it a collaborative thing between the two groups?
It would be collaborative, but clearly this section is the funding that you provide to the crowdfunders. So you're at liberty to have a slightly different approach to the other areas, as I understand it. So, you know, that's why we try and have flexible funds and flexible approaches so that we don't put any unnecessary barriers in place. So I think it would be collaborative, but, yeah, the informal group would be a really good place to have that debate.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper, sorry, I didn't see your head go up.
That's fine. Thank you, Chair. In keeping with a post comment we had earlier, I'm just looking at paragraph 13, 3, 13, 4 of the paper about the neighbourhood SIL. The comment being that there may be scope to look at this area to see if action's being taken to basically bring more community groups coming forward to make a bid for funding and encouraging that. And I see that the comms team do, you know, put out messaging around that. And I think we, all as councillors, can do as much as we can, try and get the message out. But on that, in addition, with those community-led projects that are listed there, and going back to this comment earlier about the increasing cost of construction and things like that, are we, and pick on councillor Leonard's point about how we can help in this advisory context as well? I mean, is there scope as well to look at whether any of those projects at the moment need, you know, additional allocation of SIL to cover the fact that it's time to move on? I'm thinking of a project, I'm thinking maybe the Abbotsford and Hindsdale group, they may need to sort of, you know, have additional SIL allocation to cover the fact that costs have risen and things like that. And it's a more challenging fundraising environment as well, I should say as well now.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think the reason is there's a protocol that was put in place when it was decided that, there's obviously no parish within the town area, so the decision was made that the 15% of SIL, as somebody said earlier, I think one of the councillors said earlier, goes to the town forum room. The rest of it then goes into a district pot. So you've got a local pot, the parish council and the town forum room. And then you've got the district-wide pot. And in actual fact, what we've done in Winchester, actually, is we've done both. So what we have done, because Winchester is the county town and has a broader function, some of the really big-ticket items like the leisure park, for example, £1.8 million in district SIL went into that. And in actual fact, as with some of the other projects, it could be both pots that you use to do that. But the protocol that you've got currently, I think, limits, generally speaking, any sort of community-led initiative to £50,000. Now, that's not to say that you couldn't change it if you wanted to. And what's slightly interesting is that when we do, and we're just coming to the end now, of the request that we have for the district-wide SIL community schemes, they're always, including in the city, they're always quite heavily subscribed. And sometimes we can't accommodate them all, because we've got about a quarter of a million pounds to allocate to them. Some of the, what's not been quite so, proved quite so attractive is community-led schemes that have come up organically from within the town. And I'm not quite sure why that is. There might be a variety of reasons for it. But there is scope within the context of the vision. I think you've got some money there. And it's a combination that, you know, you've got some big-ticket items like KGB, etc., and you agreed to put some money into this evening. But there might be some scope, which probably outside this meeting, which the group that's recommended in the paper might be able to have a think. Do they want to have a look at that protocol again? Maybe around the vision, wrap it up in a different way to get more of it out there, because you don't want to keep it really, but equally, you want to find projects that really give the town what it needs. And so, yeah, that's an interesting one. And I think further work, definitely scope for further work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions before we move to debate? Councillor Crask.
It's a bit simple question, Chair. Just building on from that, I recall, and I should probably know the answer, but there was a SIL manager going to be recruited to manage the SIL and get more of its spend. Am I mistaken?
No, you're not mistaken. And it's Corin that circulated that paper. So what we've got too, actually, and they're funded purely by SIL, so not from the general fund. And they do two things. The one person chases the money and sends the bills out, etc., to make sure we're getting the income that we're due. And the other officer, which is Corin Village, that generally enables us to manage how it's then spent. So it's allocated and then spent, because obviously allocating is one thing, and then we need to make sure that it's spent properly. So she also spends time making sure that the money goes and is implemented in the correct way across the district, not just within the town. So, yes, and that's something which we've got, we're quite reasonably set up in terms of managing, making sure we get the bills out and also we get paid. And equally, how we manage it once we've made allocations to particular projects. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, we'll move to debate. And I think councillor Green, you were first.
Thank you, Chair. As you probably realize, the Party in the Park is hosted up in Simbuk's area. We've missed out on three, I think it is now, since the pandemic started. We are assured that it's coming back next year. But to have Picnic in the Park there this year is absolutely fantastic. And I'm really, really excited about it. And I'm sure councillor Scott will be as well. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight, because I'm sure he'd have something to say about it. But, yeah, it's great to know we're going to get something back in Starmore again. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Crask, you're next for debate.
Thank you, Chair. So as I said, I get quite emotional about the subject. One of the emotions I've got is frustration that we're not doing enough, hard enough, fast enough. You know, when I read through the wealth of material that was generated through the vision project, all the hopes and dreams that people have stood in, it just kills me. It's a bad phrase, but just struggle with this. I want to do more faster, quicker. I do recognise this is a culture change. You know, we need to change very much how it is that the council operates and how the residents engage with the council, and how the residents take ownership for the city. And so I get peace with that in terms of, you know, this is about getting the funding, which we've been doing this year, getting the resources in place, getting the training of the council officers in terms of how it is that they can deliver differently. So that gives me reassurance there. I think I would like to see more in terms of how we can use the various funding mechanisms we've got. And Chair, I think you've got money in the budget, Chair, for implementation, whether that's resources or what, which goes to the councillor Leonard's point around how we actually get stuff done. There's probably some work we need to do in terms of legally, how people can do more for themselves. And we spoke about St Jules Hill last week. And how people legally can do work in St Jules Hill. So there's probably some legal stuff we need to do. But I think to Simon's point, we're also setting ourselves a bit short. You know, when you look through the material, the hopes and dreams that people have, and when you look through what we're doing, there's a lot we are doing to deliver on what people are looking for. You know, there's comments here that we need to ensure Winchester's return to the people, and that is all people. The city needs to show its dedication to recognising itself as a multicultural city and is welcoming them all. So the City of Sanctuary initiative reflects that, delivers on that. There's a lot which we can do to celebrate and shout out to that things have been done. There was a lot done with branding and a website of One Great Win. Nothing's been done with that for a year. And I think there's an opportunity to use that to reconnect with the people that contributed. So we can demonstrate to those people how what they said and contributed has made a difference, how things are changing. Create a, I don't know, what we can do in terms of creating an ongoing catalogue or use that as a vehicle to further engage people. But what was, one of the many things that was said was that, you know, in Winchester, we talk a lot, we don't actually do anything. So we're doing things and we're making things happen. And we need to remind people of that, because it's so easy to forget, "I forget", not till you read this and get the idea that we're actually doing these things. So I think that's important to keep in mind and keep celebrating what it is we're doing. Because of this extraordinary amount of things that we're doing, we're really making really, really great progress on many areas of, hundreds of small wins, but also big wins around the central Winchester, around River Park. Lots of really great things happening, and I think lots should be celebrated. Lots of really great things happening and I think lots should be celebrated. That was all, Chair.
Thank you. I think you just did my summing up for me. Thank you very much. So we move, oh, sorry councillor Tippett Cooper. Yeah, debate.
No, it's an opportunity as well to thank officers, which I will do in a moment towards the end. But the fact that this has only been one year since the vision's been passed has been really, really great to see all this in this paper. And I like councillor Kresk's comment. I would like to see in some way we can incorporate City Sanctuary concepts, principles within this sort of work too. I mean, I know that's in a way a separate work stream, but in a way it's not because it's kind of fundamental to the vision of who we are now. I think Winchester maybe wasn't quite on the front of the agenda when the vision was first encapsulated. But to be honest, the two broad principles underpin City Sanctuary and the vision go hand in hand. So I'm sure that will be incorporated into it because there's a lot of passion from officers and councillors behind that, the City Sanctuary concept. And I think just to say, you know, the examples here are the small wins, particularly, you know, looking at the small grants pots and the small wins that perhaps, again, we saw a little bit short in this paper. But it's no criticism at all. It's just that it emphasised that the impact these money has is really, really, really powerful. The Two Saints Grant, for example, on this paper it says four hundred and ninety pounds. That four hundred and ninety pounds goes towards exercise equipment for people who live in Westview, who are some of the most vulnerable people in our community. And the exercise equipment is there to re-support their mental health and to have a really important impact. The five hundred pound goes to Winchester Castle Football Club. They have got a large community following, but absolutely no money because they are a community club. And they do try fundraising and do that and they keep their costs going. But five hundred pounds then is a lot of money. And these organisations throughout this piece, you know, make a little go a long way. And so it is small wins, but it's small wins that are turned into even bigger wins. And that is really fantastic. And just to add, a really compliment, I don't want to name any of the names of it because there's a lot of people behind the team at work, Jane Schewer's work on small grants for the town forum has been absolutely fantastic. And what she does, she calls people who are making these bids and guides them, helps them, supports them. She wants to help the community. And it's an expression of the council's desire to help the community. And so it's a real credit we have officers like that in the team. And it's a real credit to the council that that's the approach we take. We don't sort of try and push people away and not give out the funds we've got. We try and help the community. And that's the sort of thing we do. So just to make those comments, Chair, and hopefully I haven't taken any more of your summing up.
Pretty much all of it, but that's fine. If there's any further debate? No, so I just wanted, again, to say thank you very much. And I also think you've sold yourself a little bit short here. We have taken the concept of the fifteen-minute city and that has been, that was something that came out of the vision. That was, I think, probably the first thing that we literally took and dropped into the developing local plan as something that we wanted to see developed. We used the consultation process for the vision, used the bits of it that we really liked, used it for the local plan. And you received national awards on the local plan consultations. So this vision has, the impact it's had has stretched far beyond this little group of councillors in the town. It's really had an impact on the way the council operates, the way the council interacts with the public, viewing them, trying to enable people to do things for themselves, helping them to do things for themselves, rather than always thinking that we need to do it for them. And that culture shift, I think, has almost been invisible but recognisable in the short twelve months that we have had the vision. So really, thank you. And we move to the recommendations. I'm hoping they pass. So we are asked to note and provide comment on the work stream activities, engagements and consultations, which I think we can say we've done. And we're also asked to consider establishing an informal group to oversee continued implementation of the vision. Now, that work to date has been done by the planning group, but I think there is value in having it as a secret group. Is that agreed by the town forums?
Yeah.
Agreed. So we'll do that. So thank you very much. Thank you for coming along tonight and all your work on this over the past year. And I think we look forward to continuing to work on this in the coming years. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, you'll be very pleased to note, the informal group updates. Now, we don't have the chairs of all the groups here tonight. I'm brought in from KGV. So the ones I have on my list that I think would be good to hear from tonight are the planning group, the city centre group and the heritage group. If we could keep it relatively short and we could be done by eight, that would be wonderful. So five minutes each. Planning. Councillor Kresk, did you want to provide a quick update on planning, please?
Absolutely, Chair. And I've actually found a group of people who appreciate our flip-charts skills in Central Winchester, sorry, the City of Winchester Trust. So as Simon mentioned, we had a great meeting this week, or last week, in the City of Winchester Trust. And visually it just might help, perhaps at least me, to remind myself what to talk to.
Well, do you want to come around here? We can only see the back of the paper for a year. So if you want to come around here, then people will be able to see.
Okay, I wasn't planning on this, but apologies. Actually, I was, but there you go. That was great to, so we had a wonderful meeting with.
He didn't forget his shampoo, so.
So we're very grateful to have the opportunity to spend time with Simon, Adrian and Toby of the planning department and the City of Winchester Trust. My apologies if you're listening in, City of Winchester Trust, I haven't got the notes to you from the meeting. So apologies for that. But you did say that I could talk about the meeting with you, Blessing. And it was super constructive in terms of looking at what Simon and Adrian had been doing with the workshops being added to the vision, how that feeds into the local plan process and the draft, Regulation eighteen requirements for August. The group as a whole recognised the importance of delivering against that because if you don't have a robust local plan, then we're in trouble. But, or and, there's a shared vision to do more around design from both the planning team to extend beyond the regulator requirements and the City of Winchester Trust and the planning group of us to do more in terms of developing the spatial plan, developing codes so we can actually get development to meet our needs. We spoke very much about what that might look like. We spoke about which areas we might look at. The trust have some ideas around which areas that might include. And they've actually been talking about, or talking with benefactors who might contribute funding to create part of that. So one of the things we need to talk about, Chair, with the town forum as a whole and with Cabinet and others is how we might have contributions into the town forum from benefactors who might support with further development work that we might do. We very much talked about the fact that for any such work to take place, to give it credibility, it needed to come from a body like the town forum or specifically the town forum. So it would be run and managed through us, but obviously working in close partnership with residents of Winchester and the City of Winchester Trust in particular. So that's where we ended up in terms of a shared vision around a project. We're not exactly sure what that project looks like in terms of scope right now, in terms of, there's various technical terms you can use like SPD or native plan or area action plan. Not clear exactly what we're going to propose as a project or which area, but that's very much what we came away with. Simon, did I get any of that any right?
No, I have to apologise to councillor Kresk for only getting this back about an hour and a half before the meeting. So I did send them back on the notes, but apologies it's taken a little bit longer than we'd liked. But we did circulate it through the team. But I think that's right. I mean, I think it's, as I said earlier, I think we want to do things differently in the way we approach design matters and the town through the local plan process. I think it's always difficult because obviously there'd be lots of different ideas and inevitably resources comes into that, which is what councillor Kresk was saying about how we might deliver on that. And I think what we need to do is press on with the local plan. And there was agreement that we would want to do that, but it's what work comes in parallel or comes after or is incorporated within the plan. So there's different options there about how we might do that. But I think the consensus most definitely is, you know, building on the work we did at the end of last year with the workshops, etc., is, you know, we want to do things hopefully better than what we did in the current local plan. Because time's moved on and requirements have moved on. But I think it's good to draw upon, you know, having a body like the trust is always useful because we've got people there that have the relevant sort of backgrounds and experience that can contribute to that. And then it's okay. The challenge for us is how much we can do and incorporate that within the local plan process, which is never easy. And we're always, every time I get a letter from the chief planning officer, it's get on with your local plan, do not wait for us to change it, although we might change it. So that's what we're planning to do and that's what we're on course to do. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The city centre group, do you have an update to provide to diamond?
Yes, just very briefly, Chair, let your dog get on with the other two thirds of that bum. I'd just like to report that councillor Ferguson and I attended an informal initial meeting hosted by Hampshire County Council a few days ago to consider the lighting of Winchester. Not the street lighting, but the lighting of public spaces and cultural assets across the city centre. We had a lighting designer with us to feed in some ideas. I think this was prompted partly by the huge success of the light festival just a couple of months ago here and by the long festering, it's probably too strong a word, but rumbling discontent, I think, around the Frink statue and how so much more could be made of that if it wasn't made flat by inadequate lighting. So it was a great discussion. We talked about the economic benefits, obviously tourism, football. I should have said the bid were also at the meeting, which is the bid. The social benefits and also security, people feeling safe in well-lit streets. So there was an agreement that we would begin, I want to put this very tentatively, initial work on scoping a potential project that might have multi-agency support. I think that's really important because of all that has been passed around on this one a few times in the past. So I will keep you informed and hope that it is productive. Thank you.
Thank you. And just because we have Mr Finch here as well, Sir Morris's cupboard, I can see the lights are going in.
It's happening. Thank goodness, yes. So we've had some, one or two technical issues to resolve with Kevin. But I think we need to probably say to him that, you know, he's done a great job in terms of finally getting it to the implementation stage because there were lots of constraints, not helped by Devon's going into administration. And then the CV issue of which may getting access to certain pieces that we needed to get access to impossible for a while, but I believe that's all resolved now. And, yeah, the work, it's due to finish, I think no less than about the eighth of April. And there's a few more bits to follow on from that afterwards in terms of wall wall and stuff that we've got to look at. Yes, the work is underway. Thank you, Chair.
Lovely. Thank you very much. And finally, the heritage group, councillor Tippett Cooper.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm quite a bit, we'll try and do it at a pace. And I've covered off pigeons, which I'm happy that has been covered off. So hopefully everyone's happy about that. I'm happy to answer any questions if need be. So with the heritage group, we, obviously, we had the fantastic news that there is now a really good heritage asset budget in place and particularly with this council's decision to inject four hundred and fifty thousand pounds at the budget meeting into that, which means we can actually really get started on some really important heritage works, which is fantastic. And in that regard, for Highgate, obviously the pigeon proofings was phase one and that will be sourced and completed and knocked on the head. Phase two, if I can call it that, is some restoration structural works on the gate itself. And really good news is that's now going to start going ahead. We're appointing a specialist stonework contractor. Apparently heritage stonework is a, is a sort of very specialised area. I'm not going to pretend I know anything about it, but locally, most conservation contractors in this area manage timber framework brickwork, there's few that do stonework. And one has been selected now. And we're just finalising that. And the plan is that they will carry out works on both Highgate and also Buttercross to make sure they are well reserved for the future. So those works will be going forward. And that's again, thanks to that injection of money on the heritage asset fund. Phase three for Highgate is some public realm improvements and basically looking at how Highgate can be brought into being the heritage gem that it is in the city once again and really restoring it to a high standard, which I think is a vision that we all share. And again, please say we can start works on that process as well. Thanks for the heritage asset budget. One thing I'm doing straight away is consulting with key heritage groups in the area. In fact, we're meeting next Monday. We want to get moving now. So this is all a matter of weeks since the budget was announced. So this is really good. We're trying to move as quickly as possible. And there'll be more detail coming up in that probably for the next town forum meeting. The other couple of points I've got is King Alfred. I know there's an update on him. He needed the wax, the old guy. And the good news is that, again, a team has been, a consultant, sorry, has been instructed to carry out the works. We're waiting on the start date for when that's going to happen because we need appropriate method statements, etc. But King Alfred does need maintaining. He's a real sort of symbol of vegan in our city. So that's going to happen, which is great. And then also River Park and antisocial behaviour. And I mention this because, you know, one of our heritage sites in High Abbey Gardens was impacted so negatively by antisocial behaviour with damaged benches, as this forum will remember. We're looking at, we're currently piloting a two-month trial for a private security firm to basically patrol the River Park site and try and tackle that antisocial behaviour. And there's already been daily and weekly reports coming back. There does seem to be some curving. They're not complete. It's a really, you know, it's a really difficult problem. The longer the old legislature states the lap dates, the worse it's going to get, I fear. And I think everyone's noticed the increase in graffiti in this area. But to tackle that, new equipment has been purchased, as I say, it's trying to do, or was stupidly purchased to tackle graffiti more effectively. I personally have bought some graffiti remover from Urban Hygiene. Everyone knows. I mean, it's quite effective. It's soft and gentle plastics, I'm told. And I was happily cleaning a leather box the other weekend, which you can do if you get the correct stuff. But I don't recommend doing that. I'm sure you'd get advice on the graffiti removal products you're using. But in terms of antisocial behaviour, hopefully the private security firm that's been engaged will try and curb that in River Park. One of the things with this forum I think about is whether we need to kind of keep that in place after the pilot trial. And I suspect probably there'll be a great deal of support for something like that to be kept because, you know, I think a lot of people are concerned about antisocial behaviour in the area at the moment. And we're doing, I think, everything we can to tackle it.
Great. Thank you very much. Right as the bells ring. Perfect timing. So the final item on the agenda is the work programme, which, because we are at the end of the municipal year, is incredibly short. We do have items provisionally listed to come forward during the next council year. Those are the multi-use games areas provision, which I think we agreed would be wrapped into the youth provision report. But we'll double check with councillor Ferguson on that because I know that was coming under the health and environment policy. We also have the Mawne Hills Cemetery Memorial Garden update due to come in the June meeting and the St Giles Hill Park management plan to be adjourned. So can we agree the work programme as such as it is?
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you all. A lovely year as always. I just also wanted to say a big thank you and farewell to councillor Weir. We understand this is your very final council meeting, which is quite fitting given you're the chair of this forum for such a long time. So thank you for all of your effort over the years. It's very appreciated. So thank you for all of your effort over, over the years, it's very appreciated and thank you for being such a great mentor for me in this role. Thank you. Chair, could I also, before you formally close the meeting, could I also say a very big thank you to you for chairing this committee over the past year and in other years as well, with such great charm and making us all feel very welcome to make the comments that we do. So thank you very much. Thank you.
And also, because I thought to mention my debate earlier on the vision, a huge amount of credit goes to you councillor Becker for basically being the champion of that vision. And I think that's extraordinarily big credit to you in the last year, so thank you.
Thank you. I think for that one, I'm definitely carrying the torch, councillor Hutcheson, but thank you. And councillor Crisc.
I won't forget one then. But I just wanted to, just to acknowledge the space to give people to express themselves here. I think it's an appropriate space for people to express themselves through councillors and you provide that encouragement also.
Thank you. I very much hope to be back in this role then too. But thank you all. Meeting adjourned at 8:02.
Thank you.